This is great. I want to thank everyone for being here, who's listening and watching. Thank you. My name is Myra Uribe. I am born and raised in District Three. I'm a daughter of immigrants from Colombia and Argentina, and I'm proud that my parents moved to Orange County in 1972 in Pine Castle, and I was born there in Razor. And this is all I know, District Three. I went to school at Lancaster Elementary, Walker Junior High, and graduated from Ukridge High School. And now I'm married to my husband Kevin, who's here with me, 22 years, and we have two children. We have a daughter Faith, 20 years old, and our son, who just turned seven. So we're getting both perspectives of what it's like to be in this community. But what's important is, I never left my community. I still live in Pine Castle. Because what I earnestly believe in my heart is that you don't abandon your community when you make it, when you progress. You actually have to stay and lift your community up. And my community has changed. When I was there, when I grew up there, and what it is now, it is a predominantly Latino community. And I'm proud to be there. And what brought me to run for this position was the inequality of representation in government. I noticed that where it depends where you live is what you get and what the services you get. And I used to always say, well, if everything that happens in Pine Castle and Orange Blossom Trail was allowed in Windermere, was allowed in Winter Park, was allowed in Lake Nona, then I wouldn't complain. But we know the level of service that goes to our community was lacking. And that's what prompted me to run. And in 2018, I had a brand-new baby, three months old. And it motivated me. Living through the birth of my child when I almost died made me realize that if we don't get up and fight, our children are going to have it worse than we did. And that's what motivates me every day. Oh, my time went to zero already? Oh, okay. Well, I look forward to talking more about it because we have so much to do. We've accomplished a lot as a county commission, so many services that we've brought to the people and we continue to bring. And I can't wait to share some of those that we're doing.
Thank you. And so you mentioned you're a daughter of District Three?
Yep.
Well, Alianza is a daughter of Hurricane Maria. I was actually in Puerto Rico, living in Puerto Rico during that period of time. And, you know, lived through that experience. And for Alianza, the issue of climate change, storms, resilience, is a conversation that's deeply in the DNA of our organization. So I mentioned that, you know, as a cute thing, but in terms of the children of Maria. But the fact they said is not that cute. It was a really hard moment for our community, and it still has become, it is part of the DNA of this community in Puerto Rico and here, because we received, you know, thousands of people that came from Puerto Rico, like myself, after the hurricane. So moving to the topic of resilience, climate change, and sustainability, and we started with you, so we'll start with Gus this time. Mr. Martinez, what are your thoughts on the current impacts of climate change in Orange County?
Well, to begin, all you got to do is step outside 90-degree weather and feel that 110-degree heat index. I believe we need to do better to take care of our environment. I myself have done my part by installing solar panels on my homes and going out there and fishing with the groups that go out and fish plastic out of our oceans. I've done so much, and I am a proponent of our environment, so much so that I'm probably one of the few people who actually read that Orange County Water Report. It affects us in so many ways. When I first moved to where I live at in 2004, it was like driving up Weingard was going through a cave of trees. And now we're lucky if we got four or five trees. We need to make sure we do better with this and start planting some more trees. I just became a grandfather for the first time about three months ago. And I want to see my grandson grow up and enjoy Orange County the way the rest of my family has.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. Of course, we have an issue. I mean, what we're really proud of at the county right now is that we've acquired more environmentally sensitive land in the last six years than we have ever. And it's time, because we've allowed growth, lack of infrastructure to take over. And I'm really proud, because now we brought the rural boundary to the ballot, and we're now working on the annexation protection to the ballot, to give people the right to protect their lands and our lands. And sadly, we as county commissioners had to do it because the legislature, Senate Bill 1420, which Commissioner Stewart voted for, took away the right of the Citizen Review Committee. They preempted the work that they did for 15 months. And luckily, this happened in time that we were able, as a county commission, to get it, own it, get it on the ballot, and we just passed it successfully on Tuesday. And it was great to have 84 residents come out and give public comment. Because this is where it starts. We've allowed a lot of development without commitment to the environment, without commitment to the infrastructure, without commitment to the basic necessities that's happened. And it doesn't come back. Once you pave it, it's done. And now the annexation part is fighting us, because City of Orlando wants to annex Sunbridge. And there's a rural boundary, and they're ignoring it. So we, again, as the county commission, had to empower the voters to make sure that we protect those lands, because where's the accountability start? If we don't have it within your elected officials, and the people want it, and we're going to keep fighting for it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator?
Well, I'm very glad it was brought up about the rural boundary and the bill that was passed in the Senate. I voted against the amendment that was placed on there to remove the Citizen Review Committee from allowing rural boundaries to be placed on the ballot. It did not remove the county from being able to do that. So that's a little area that I really want to bring out. I voted against it. Only two of us voted against it. There's 40 of us in the Senate. Only Senator Thompson and myself voted no, not to accept that amendment. But of course, it went into the regular large bill, which was a commerce bill that had many things in it that everybody here in the audience would like to see happen with the ports. And it extends the amount of time that government can pay back their loans from five years to 10 years. There was a lot of things in that commerce bill that I could not say no to. So when you say that I voted against the establishment of a rural boundary, I did not. And I'm going to tell you straight off, that is why the county commission on Tuesday was able to put it on the ballot, because it did not exclude the Board of County Commissioners from going forward with it. It simply said that the Central, I mean, the Citizens Review Committee could not do it. It was up to the county to do it. And it was unanimous. So I think that we got our way. Those that support have a boundary, they got their way, and I'm happy, and I'm for it.
Did we go around already?
That's it.
Yeah. Okay. So I sometimes lose track.
Oh, don't worry.
It's a long, it's a long, but I trust you'll keep me honest. So the next, you know, talking about climate change, cars are one of the number-one contributors to global warming through the emissions. And here in the county, we've seen how traffic has gotten worse and worse, and congestion's gotten worse and worse. It's along the same topic, right? Development run loose. So what other infrastructure projects are a priority for you, considering that the I-4 is within your district, the I-4 corridor? Yeah.
Okay. I'll help you with that. Yes. Okay. So one of the crazy things that happened in 2009, the county commission voted for an AMA, Alternative Mobility Area, which exempted transportation to be an issue in development. They never sunsetted it. So here it was, 2021, and it was done to help invigorate the economy, to get developers to develop. And no one ever thought to make it have a dead end. So there's where our transportation problem started, when you weren't even getting that commitment to the infrastructure and transportation. So I took it to the county, and I said, we got to eliminate this. If you want to pass a transportation penny tax, and you're still allowing developers to get away with this, we have a major problem. That was done under Mayor Carradine, the AMA. So we eliminated it, because we weren't holding development accountable. That is our problem. We have roadway agreements in West Orange County, Horizon West, that aren't being honored. And so now you're getting these two-lane streets with major development happening now. And now we get to use transportation as a caveat to have that accountability. But where we are now, we've allowed too much to pass. And now we're trying to expect the voters and the people who live in this county to pay for it. Not to mention the half-million people who are in our town every single day visiting, because there are 73, 74 million people visiting. They contribute zero to infrastructure and transportation, but they want the people to carry the bill? That's not right. We've got to keep fighting that. We need to go and make sure that we use some of those dollars to help it, because we cannot continue to expect the people who live in this town to foot the bill for everyone who uses these resources. And we're very behind. It's going to cost us billions, and we've got to move forward.
Thank you. Senator Stewart?
We have had this problem. It didn't happen this year. It didn't happen nine years ago. Probably began 20 years ago. So, you know, we keep kicking the can down the street. And that is, really needs to stop. We have also opportunities for other, to work with the tourism industry, to be able to have them voluntarily help us with the transportation infrastructure. We need more links buses. We need to connect the Sun Rail up to the airport and up to the convention center. And I think that would be supported by the tourism industry. We have to look at the bright line and also have that connectivity. We have pieces of transportation that don't match. And if we, until we have an opportunity to connect them, so that people that are working in our community can use that form of transportation, get the cars off the road, and put them in affordable transportation to be able to get to work, then we have failed. And I think that's something that I can certainly do something about.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Martinez?
I believe that as the fifth-largest growing city in Florida, and one of the top-major cities in the nation, it's time we start thinking about our own mass transit surface system. We have a bunch of buses who, by themselves, contribute to pollution. I think that investing into a bus system that's reliable, where people are not losing their jobs because they're constantly getting to work late because of it, I think it's time for us, as a county, to start looking to make that investment, so that Orange County owns the surface system, and that we're not giving billions of dollars to a private bus company that has nothing to do with us. Throwing more money at a problem is not solving the issue. By investing in a mass transit system, you're going to alleviate the pressure on the traffic, especially in downtown, where you have so many sporting events that affect so many tourists. And one of the solutions would have been to use that TDT tax, instead of putting a dome on a stadium or investing on the convention center further. That money could have been used. It benefits not only the local travelers, but those who come for their special events as well.
Okay. So we're going to do a quick lightning round
Oh.
of questions regarding the penny tax for transportation. The mayor has brought that up again, right, for?
Again.
He's, I read he's thinking of bringing it up again, right? So are you in favor or are you not? Yes or no, Senator Stewart?
I'm in favor of putting it on the ballot. On the ballot, yeah.
On the ballot.
I don't see the reason to put it on the ballot. It's already been on the ballot, and the people said no.
Okay. And you're in favor of putting it in the ballot. Now, one round again, obviously, I think you said no. So the two of you, are you in favor of it or not?
I'm in favor of it.
Would you vote for it if it's on the ballot?
I'm in favor of it.
No, it needs a lot of work.
Okay.
That was the problem, why we didn't forward it to the election this year. Can't run the same plan that we just had
Thank you.
two years ago.
Thank you.
And expect a different outcome.
Thank you. All right. So we got through the little lightning round pretty well. Do you support the slashing of net metering proposed by OUC? They're proposing a new way to deal with the solar panels. And as you know, net metering is how you get reimbursed when you have solar panels for any excess energy they produce. Are you supportive of that? And also, they're proposing a time-of-use rates that may increase the cost of energy during the peak hours of use in homes where you have elderly folks, and in homes that where people may be working from home, that could really elevate their expenses at the electric bill. So we're going to go now with Gus. You start us off with regarding the net metering and the time-of-use rates that OUC is proposing.
I disagree with OUC, obviously. I already have solar panels. I have net metering. And the reason why people who got solar panels got them was to cut back on the exuberant amount of money that we pay for power. And the fact that if you look at your bill, you're getting fuel charges when most of these companies are using solar farms, they're charging you for fuel. I think that needs to be looked into. I don't believe that OUC should be given carte blanche to keep charging their customers more money.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Commissioner?
I have a lot of issues with OUC and that meter, and of course not. We don't, we can't, we cannot support this. First of all, when they started going to solar, they came to us as commissioners and said, we're going to go solar. And I said, all right, when are the residents going to get the benefit of the solar? They said, oh, never. That's wrong. How do we continue to let these big organizations and corporations continue to take from the people who live here? We've got to stand up. You cannot, we cannot have paid for their solar, and then they still keep the rates going. Absolutely not. And you're right. Who are going to be hurt? The disabled to our home, the seniors at our home, children who learn from home? This is not, not a good thing. And we need to continue to fight it. And they've got to, we've got to stop allowing these companies to just have control. I don't know where, you know, you've got these boards that they have. Where do they forget the purpose of being on that board? It's to represent the people, not to represent the corporation, not to represent the highest, but to represent the people. And we're losing that line, that line of what it was defined to have these board members to represent us and fight for those rights, is going away. And we have to be, we have to continue to advocate, because unfortunately, we're seeing more and more happiness all along.
Thank you. Senator Stewart?
Well, I believe in promises made, promises should be kept. And Honorable Marquinez here, he has solar, he had a promise made to him that it was going to reduce his utilities, and it was going to provide him a way of balancing his budget at home. Well, you know, we've got to fight that. Whenever they decide that they're going to go in and strip that promise away, that's when we need to step in.
Thank you, Senator. Our next question has to do with the Vision 2050 Plan. Orange County is currently considering a new comprehensive plan called Vision 2050 in order to address the housing crisis. If this plan is adopted, many residential areas in District Three would have higher allowable density. Do you support adopting Vision 2050? Why or why not? And we'll start with Commissioner Uribe.
I love this topic, because I'm very passionate about it. Absolutely not. Vision 2050 is bad for Orange County. It is bad for District Three. It is bad for every district in Orange County. When this first came in front of us a year ago, before it went to transmittal to the state, I was the only commissioner that voted no, because there was no commitment to infrastructure, which we've already discussed. There was no commitment to transportation, which we've already discussed. There was no commitment to school capacity. And now we're seeing OCPS come to us, saying, slow down. This is a major bad thing. You cannot take one code and one plan and put it county-wide. We are not every part of this Orange County. Luckily, I've convinced some of my colleagues, and we've had some community sunshine meetings with the community, to really start turning the wave, you would say, on recognizing areas. One thing about Orange County District Three, we're a very old county. We have the highest historical markers than anywhere in Orange County. We have Pine Castle, the oldest city. It was actually before the City of Orlando. So absolutely not. We also have the disafford of, like in our Taft area, where we have high industrial with residential right behind it. You cannot create one rule and expect the people in Horizon West, Lake Nona, Conway, Belt Isle, Pine Castle, Azalea Park, be the same. We're not. And we need to stop this. We need to look at different ways. We need to fix it. I will be speaking more about this. We have a community meeting. I asked the people to get engaged, because this is happening right under our nose. Luckily, we've gotten some more traction on stopping it. But Vision 2050 is no good. We need to stop it. And one thing for sure, and if anybody can say Orange County is the same county-wide, absolutely not. So we cannot have the same code county-wide.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator?
It has problems. And we go to community meetings, and those that are aware of it, most people are not. Most people, when they heard 2050, they don't know what that means, some futuristic space capsule or something. But they don't know what that is. But it is a very dangerous, the way it is written right now, is very dangerous for the neighborhoods. I think that we should be able to, you know, look at it maybe a little differently. But right now, the way it's structured, I'm not for it.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
I'm going to make it unanimous. I don't believe the 2050 Plan is any good. And I'm going to go on the record and say that, but I understand that Florida law requires us to have a plan in place for growth. But this has nothing to do with growth. This has to do with paralyzing future commissioners from making decisions with their budgets. This is locking the people's money for the next 25-plus years. You can't do that, and I don't agree with that. You can't spend money you haven't even raised yet. So 2050 is out the window for me.
Thank you. Thank you, each, every one of you, for your questions. These were questions around the resilience, climate change, and sustainability section of the conversation tonight. We're going to open it for the audience, if there's any questions with regards to climate, clean energy, and sustainability.
Hold on.
Is there a mic?
Yes.
Yes.
Where the mic right here?
As far as the climate change and sustainability, I'm sorry, my English is not so much. And I noticed we haven't spoken Spanish here, but it's okay. What is your stand on, or what have you proposed, Senator or Commissioner Uribe, in reference to something that will benefit the Orange County area?
As I stated before, thank you for the question, is that we are actually proposing stopping and creating a rural boundary. That's what we're doing. We have gotten more environmentally protected, acquired land in Orange County than we ever have. We just recently even acquired more acreage. We've got to stop allowing development to just go rampant. And you cannot continue to sustain the people. We had so much flooding in Ian because we've overdeveloped. And if you know District Three, which you do, it's old. You look at Rio Penar, you look at Gulfstream Harbor, back when they built that, they didn't have the rules they have now. So now what happens, they've become victims of flooding. There's nowhere for the water to go. And now we're dealing with storm drainage issues. So we've got to stop, and we've got to make a line that says, nowhere can you go here. Look what's happening in the Pluris and Wedgefield, all that community with bad, bad water. And they bought into a private sector. That should not happen anymore in this community, because you're right. People don't know. The water's not good. They say the water's not even good for them to give to their animals. Why would it be good for humans? So we've got to create that rural boundary, and we've got to stop allowing people to go past that. And that's why, next, the annexation.
And was your question for Commissioner Uribe only, or would you like to hear from the others?
Well, she's standing on the chair, so I wanted her to know what was, maybe somebody else also wanted to do.
Any of you would like to comment? All right.
Well, I'll sit there, so.
Maybe some future plans.
Right.
Do we have, do we have time, anything from the
No.
online? No? Okay. So we'll move on to our next subject, which is civic engagement. And we touched on it a little bit. We scratched the surface on it earlier. But every year in the Florida Legislature ends up preempting our counties, in one way or another, through new legislation. As a county commissioner, how can you, and how can the people, work with our legislators to protect home rule? And this is, this is a great question for someone who's got experience both in the county and state level, and for those of you who are aspiring to the county, as well as currently in the county. So let's talk a little bit about home rule, and how do we protect that? And we
That was the first last time, so.
So it's Senator Stewart?
You know, what happens is lobbyists. So what happens is that they'll come in, and they'll talk to all of the senators about the subject, and try to convince them to vote a certain way. Well, if you're inclined to go along with them, then the bill gets written, and then you have interference with the local jurisdictions. However, we get a lot of local county, city people coming in that have their own lobbyists, and try to prevent these from happening. Sometimes they're successful, sometimes they're not. But when you're in a minority in the state senate, you have, your voice is not as strong when it comes to those matters. Your voice can be strong in other matters, because I get along with everybody, and we try to work on different subject matters. But usually, home rule is very difficult to protect from a senate or house area. And it takes the effort of the county to come in and bring their opinion, and make sure that they are talking to everybody on the committees that will be voting, in order to get them to back off of the home rule thing. But they tend to have, they tend to want to, like, interfere. And we just have to keep working on countering that through our own lobbying efforts in the county.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Martinez?
Well, I don't think the problem is so much just the lobbyists, as much as communication with the community, right? Before I got involved in politics, I rarely ever knew what was going on in my own community, because the meetings are scheduled during work hours, because the notices are not sent in a timely manner, or because, you know, the people just take it into a private group. I remember one decision that the state made, that was, I think, six or seven people that voted only when it came to felons getting their civil liberties back. It wasn't presented to the constituency of the state. Six or seven people just took it upon themselves and said, no, they're going to have to apply for the civil liberties, instead of automatically restoring it. And that happens with a lot of different areas. The working class is not properly notified, so we can't be in attendance. So there goes that civic engagement right there. It requires more dedication and honest communication with the working class.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Commissioner?
The reason why we're running for office is because of home rule. We know our community more than Tallahassee knows our community. And we have to remember that. There was a thing called the rental ordinance, that you guys were very involved in.
Yeah.
All the unions were involved in. And it was a very heated, heated discussion that we passed, and the voters overwhelmingly supported. And not only did we pass, but we funded to help people with that gap of insurance, excuse me, of their rent going up. And what did they do in Tallahassee? They preempted us. I have to go back to the Citizen Review Committee. Citizen Review Committee is established to do ballot initiatives. There is going to be a ballot initiative of increasing commissioners for Orange County. But why did the rural boundary one that protects our environment get hijacked? Why did a senator out of Pasco County hijack an Orange County ordinance that we were doing to protect our land, not Pasco County, our land? And I'm sorry, we, every delegate here should have fought, no, this was us. This is happening to Orange County, not statewide, because these people, this committee, and you've been, you were at some of the Citizen Review meetings, I was at them. 77 meetings, lots of work with attorneys, a lot of protection to protect our community, and a swift vote, it was gone. Luckily, the hindsight was that we had enough time to get it on the ballot ourselves. That's the essence of home rule. I think that anybody who runs for local office believes in it, and we continue to fight for it. But we've also got to work with the legislative session, so they know this. We're dealing with this issue right now with transportation statewide also, where they're trying to eliminate the MPOAC, which is how we receive our funding, state and federal. But home rule is the essence of what your local elected officials are. And we need to keep championing for that.
Thank you. Senator?
I was first.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. See, I told you I lose my track sometimes. So Commissioner, you seem to be pre-understanding, or you have pre-vision of what my questions are. We're going to talk about the number of commissioners in the county commission next, you mentioned in your answer. So do you support?
This is turning.
Yes. So do you, so no, but you're like reading our questions ahead of time. You're preempting our questions. So the, for all of you, do you support increasing the number of commission seats in Orange County, as the ballot is, that's going to the voters? And how do you think this measure would change the county? So it's not a yes or no question. It's, how do you think the impact of adding seats to the commission, what that impact would be?
Well, for one thing, I do not believe we should add more members to the county commission. It's supposed to be a part- It's supposed to be a part-time job with a full-time salary. I, I just, I put in, I don't know, maybe 100 hours a week at my regular job. So I, I, I don't see the need to expand the commission and add additional, not only commissioners, but personnel to support those commissioners. I think it just requires more time in the office.
Okay, Mr. Martinez. Commissioner Uribe?
Okay, first, we don't, we don't have enough data to even understand this, if it, if it makes a difference. But I'm gonna speak as a commissioner. When it was, when this was created as a part-time job, it was the 80s. We had less, we had 400,000 people in this county. We have over 1.5 million people. Trust me, it's not a part-time job. I work six days a week. I don't have another job. This is all I do. And I still don't have enough time to do my job. I work, I mean, you guys were even generous enough to let us move this because I had an event right before here and rushed over here. If you're really helping the people, if you're really doing events, if you're really out in your community, having your public hearings, letting your community know what decisions are being made in Orange County, it's not part-time. I'll show you my work calendar. I'll have days where I have 13 meetings in one day when we've gotta be brief, educated. Read a 2,000-page book every other Monday? This is not part-time. This is more than even college and high school mixed together. This is a job where you need people who are qualified, who know the job, who are responsible to the people who are out there listening. And not to mention, even District 3 is different. The issues that are important in Taft are different in Azalea, Rio Pinar, Pine Castle, Belle Isle, Edgewood, Lee Vista. Everyone doesn't have the same issue. They are different issues all over. So me representing, I believe, more like 300,000 people because we know they all weren't counted in the census. Let's be real. We have more than 1.5 million people in this county. It is a lot more than a part-time job. But I don't think that you make decisions without data to support it and why it's needed. I won't speak on other commissioners and how they run their office, but I'm gonna tell you on mine, we are responsive to the people because you take care of your community first.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator, same question.
I do think that we need more commissioners. I think that the commissioners that are there now are capable of handling the amount of people that they've been assigned to represent. As I said before, my job is described as part-time. It is not part-time. When we are compassionate and elected officials, we put as much time as necessary into that position. When you give yourself a 25% raise and then you wanna reduce how many people you get to serve by adding two more people, which also adds three more aides, you're causing a huge impact to your budget that could be put in other areas such as the homeless population and workforce housing. So I do, I am not in favor of adding two more commissioners. I think that those that represent the area, they were elected, they knew what they were getting into, and they should just continue to represent as well as they have represented.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Sepulveda, do we have questions from the?
Yes, we do. We do have one question here. And it's overall, it is, it is in Spanish. I'm gonna read it in Spanish. And I would like for you, Mr. Martinez and Uribe, to answer in Spanish. And I will translate for you to answer in English. Okay, so. Padre Hoover Gajica pregunta. Necesitamos quien nos represente y apoye. Dígase a la comunidad latina. Urge la dignidad y respeto para cada persona en el distrito. ¿Cuál es su propuesta para promover la dignidad de la comunidad latina? For, for you. Father Hoover Gajica answers or questions, no? We need representation and support. And it's urgent that we get dignity and respect for, for everyone in the district. What is, what do you propose to bring or promote dignity within the Latino community on your district? Please, Ms. Uribe.
Okay. ¿Contestamos en español primero?
Sí, por favor.
Padre Hoover, un saludo muy grande. Gracias por la pregunta. Mire, no hay nada más importante de la dignidad de la comunidad latina. Primero, siendo latina y sabiendo el logro que nosotros tuvimos para llegar a este país es número uno. Y es algo que hace muchos años, había un tiempo con tantos latinos en el condado que no teníamos ni una persona que hablaba español y que era hispano en el comité. Y ahora tenemos tres mujeres. Maribel Gómez Cordero, Emma Limónilla, y yo. Y hemos cambiado la representación. Y ahora es común que tenemos todo en dos lenguajes hasta tres lenguajes. En mi oficina, primero, se habla inglés, español, y portugués siempre. También se traduce la información que ponemos afuera. Especialmente fue urgente cuando estábamos en COVID porque el alcalde de nosotros en ese tiempo, ¿usted se acuerda? Que no querían decir los, los comités de prensa en español. Y con Johana López, con Maribel Gómez Cordero y yo, hicimos una prensa y forzamos que el condado hablara a nuestra comunidad en español en el idioma que nosotros entendemos y sabemos porque sabe que cuando esa enfermedad pegó, pegó más a la comunidad latina que otra comunidad. También los servicios que ofrecemos, todo el apoyo que tenemos, asegurando que cuando esos servicios salen para nuestra comunidad, están en el idioma y para que ellos entiendan lo que está pasando. Y más que nada, yo sé que nosotras como latinas hacemos todo posible para incluir latinos en contratos, en servicios, en apoyo de comités. Yo he puesto un mexicano muy, muy, muy persona, muy persona muy buena en la parte de los artes porque hay mucho lo que está pasando. Y otra parte cultural en la arte. Nosotros somos de cultura y somos los que menos recibimos los fondos del condado para el arte y la cultura. Y hemos cambiado eso y seguimos luchando. So para mí, siendo latina soy orgullosa y termina, y también enforzando el logro para los latinos es lo que yo quiero también y quiero seguir haciendo. Gracias.
Muchas gracias a Senor Martinez.
Padre, te doy gracias por esa pregunta. Como hispano, como puertorriqueño, me siento con mucho orgullo ser la voz para muchos hispanos. Primeramente, creo que nosotros necesitamos reunirnos como hispanos. En mi distrito, 39.4% de la comunidad registrada a votar somos hispanos. El problema es que nos dejamos dividir. Primeramente, nos dividen por el lenguaje. Segundo, nos dividen por el país de origen. Y tercero, nos dividen por el partido por cual votamos. Cuantito nos aprendamos a respetar uno a los otros y nos unamos como una voz hispana, ahí vamos a tener el poder donde ya no nos quitan los dulces, los otros, las otras razas, los otros, cualquier otra categoría que quiera tirar. Nosotros los hispanos tenemos un poder en esa voz, en este distrito de 39.4%.
Muchas gracias, Ms. Stewart. I'm going to repeat the question for you. Okay, so that you are aware. I know that it's not. So, so practically what Father Hoover Gajica is saying that we urgently need decent representation for the Latino community within your district. What do you propose to bring dignity to the Latino community within the district?
Well, I am for dignity for everyone. But in, in relationship to the population of the district, it is, has a large population of Latino. And I'm tired of people talking and not having any action. You know, there's lots of things that we can be doing. I proposed, when I was in the state, $850,000 to go to Aleanza so that they could help with education. That got vetoed by the governor, but it was my contribution that I thought we needed to have. Also, you know, we can, I've been working with Anna Manades to make sure that we can have a career day where we can train the people that are there for educating them on how to apply for jobs, how to dress for a job, how to talk when they're interviewed. Those things don't cost money. That it takes effort, but it doesn't cost money. But there are things that we need to put into effect that will cost money. And I think that those are the kind of things that we're not paying attention to. We can put apprenticeship programs together. We can get back into the schools and find a way for us to take those that who do not have a path to college to have them a path to a good job. There are many, many, many things that we could do that we're not doing. And I think that that is something that I'm very experienced with. And I'll be able to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. Marcos?
Thank you. Any questions from the audience? There's a question for the, on civic engagement.
Hello. This is my question for Senator Stewart. Since you were in a different level of government outside the county, is there any insider info or anything that you can share with us that you've noticed with your colleagues that about civic engagement that you thought were innovative and that you could also like have your own version to have more civic engagement in your county? Or is there anything also that you noticed that made you question, why were they there in the first place?
Well, as we all know, every senator comes from a different area. And just like in Orange County, areas are different. And so, you know, having to talk to those senators that come from a different makeup, it's a skill. And we have to be able to understand and appreciate that they don't necessarily agree with us in what our quest is, but that we can come to a compromise. So yeah, we've done some things together that particularly with the women's issues, on the rape kits and things of that nature, where we definitely 100% agree. We had a bill for making sure that those that are incarcerated would be able to get an education while they are in prison. So when they came out, they had a second chance and could get another job. It was unanimous, unanimous in the senate, unanimous in the house. It passed, and then the governor vetoed it. And so he vetoed second chances. So there are a number of times when we have come together. And we, and it's a matter of conversation and it's a matter of respect for one another. Some of the things that we had worked on, the I-4 dieison that was in the water, that came up in the senate and certainly in the house. The senate passed along the bill, but the house didn't want to. So, you know, we have these conflicts, not within our own body, but sometimes with the other side of the aisle, not aisle, but the other side of the building. So it, it's a tricky situation, but you learn how to overcome it and you learn how to communicate with one another. So there are things that we do and can agree on. And there's things that we probably never would agree on.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, okay. I, I gotta answer this because civic engagement is the essence of what I do, why I do. I actually took a proposal to Orange County and said, "We need a youth advisory board." Because once kids hit high school and they're a senior and they're out of high school, they're not gonna get involved. We have to capture them when they're young. Unfortunately, the county said, "Well, that's a liability issue. We can't have it." So I said, "I'm gonna do it on my own." So I mentor eight students from each of my high schools. And I get them in 11th grade, 12th grade. I'm on my second class now. So my, my juniors from this year are now becoming seniors. Because they're the ones that are our future leaders, you know? My daughter is here and so is my son. My daughter, we grew up off of, hi, guys. We grew up off of OBT. My daughter from little is like, "Why does everyone think OBT is so bad?" It's just good families that are just trying to make it. I said, "What do you wanna do about it?" She's like, "We should do a huge community cleanup." She helped me recruit 120 teenagers. Then it got word and out them Congresswoman Demings and Sheriff Mina came. We cleaned five miles of OBT. We picked up bullets. We picked up stuff people don't wanna see. But you know what happened? The kids got involved and they were a part of it. I have gone to 25, all 25 of my elementary schools, six of my middle schools and four of my high schools. I have relationships with every parent liaison, with every principal, because that's where it's at. We need our young people involved. All of my kids that I, that graduated a year ago are all in college. I wrote their college letters. And I hope to do that same because they're also responsible for having a community project. And we had our second annual Connectable. It's a teen-only event with resources from the Zebra Coalition, Project Opioid, Career Source, Valencia, UCF. We've got to make sure young people are at the table. I tell people, "I've come this far. The next generation better pass me. They better not come where I'm at. They need to go beyond me." Because we, you all are the next one, they're the next leaders. And we need you, and you need to be prepared.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We have one, one more question here in the, in the audience.
Muchas gracias. La pregunta mía va a ser en español porque creo que es. La pregunta mía va a ser en español porque creo que en el distrito la mayoría de las personas que vivimos pues hablamos el idioma. La pregunta dirigida a la comisionada Uribe y quiero que todos los demás candidatos también den respuesta. Se habló el padre e hijo de la dignidad humana. Y yo creo que la dignidad humana también incluye cada mujer, cada latino, cada hombre, cada veterano, cada anciano y cada persona que es menos favorecida en la comunidad. Un comisionado ganó el año 113,608 dólares después de que en septiembre de 2023 se subieron los sueldos. Si no hay fondo para los hombres, ¿cómo va a haber fondos para subir los sueldos de los comisionados? O sea, se está hablando, pero nadie ha hablado sobre ese tema que es bien importante porque es la dignidad de esas personas, que no hay fondo. Pero si hay fondo para subir los sueldos. Entonces, ¿qué vamos a trabajar en base a eso? También se habló de la cultura. Y yo nunca he visto a la comisionada Uribe en una marcha LGBTQ, que también es cultura. Muchas gracias.
Let me be kind and translate more or less for Ms. Stewart, no? His question was related to your salaries. Did you guys earn, as per his research, over 100 grand? And yet, it is said that there is no funds for anything. But then, there was funds to raise your salaries, no? And also, he is, he's inquiring about representation for the LGBT community. He said that he hasn't seen Ms. Uribe in any activity for the LGBTQ community. So I believe we start with you, with Ms. Stewart, right?
We'll start with.
With Mr. Martinez?
Since he hasn't spoken.
Okay.
We're gonna do him.
Yeah, we're gonna start with Mr. Martinez. Go to my Commissioner Uribe and then Senator Stewart.
Bueno, te la voy a responder en español. Yo me he dedicado desde 2010 a dar a los hombres de cualquier caminata de la vida. No importar su religión o su preferencia sexual. No importa de qué raza han sido. Yo les he abrazado, yo he orado con ellos, les he repartido comida, le he dado ropa. He organizado eventos en online, especialmente Thanksgiving at Lake Yola, que es, que lo hice los últimos seis años anteriores. Pero por 14 años yo he hecho fiestas grandes para toda la comunidad. Hecho eventos para los niños pobres, eh, por los últimos siete años. Eh, un evento de Navidad donde traigo una fiesta entera de Navidad. No me he importado de dónde venga la gente, de qué raza, qué idioma habla. Yo me he ido a las calles a amar la gente porque eso es como me crió mi mamá.
Yeah, okay. Gracias a este señor Martínez, Commissioner.
Okay, I want to answer this a little bit English too because my daughter's here. Not only have we been at L G B T issues, we were at the dignity gala last week where we accepted the award for the most open for Orange County to do this. Not to mention my daughter Faith. We have been in pride parades with her, her fa, her friends, my family. So I'm not gonna accept that, para que los que no entiendan, en L G B T hacen, Nancy sabe, yo he estado con pride en este evento y apoyando porque sabe que somos humanos primero, humanos primero. Ahora, la parte de los homeless, hemos dado más fondos a los homeless. We've given more funding to homeless. We just gave $10 million through the county, through the general fund. But the homeless issue is huge. You know that. It is a lot bigger than we can take. Rising cost of living is killing our community. Low wages in tourism is killing our community. That's what we need to fight. And then I want to talk about the salary. The salary was placed in 1996. There were less than 700,000 people in this county. They've never gotten the raise for 30, 29, 24 years. They've never got adjusted their wages. Osceola and Seminole senators who don't even represent one third of who we represent make more than we do. So we fight for $15 an hour. We made sure that was the base wage in Orange County. We have stood and fought with Unite Here, with Sedesco, with the convention center over and over for better wages. But we're not good enough to be paid for what we work. Trust me, the hours that I work, I don't get paid what you think it is. Not to mention I have to cover all of my, I don't get free medical. Every one of my family members in the back I have to pay for. So, but you're gonna tell a commissioner and Osceola represents 400,000 people. We represent 300,000 each and they were making more than us. Seminole County too, 1996. Do we not, do people not depend on those wages? And you want to make sure your commissioner is gonna work full time and be there and not be a part time job. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator?
Well, I'm very proud of my involvement with the L G B T Q plus community. Um, I've been endorsed by the Rainbow Democrats. I've been endorsed by the Florida L G B T Q community. I'm on the board of directors for the Gay Corus Alliance. Um, I have certainly participated in every single parade, every single event. Um, I got, um, 500 drag queens up to Tallahassee and had them on the steps of the Capitol so they could voice their opinion. Uh, so I'm solid with that community. Uh, when it comes to the homeless situation, we have a real problem with the connectivity of the services that are not available and could be. So they're not operating in a way that is a one stop shop. You've got to pick up the phone and call a million different places to find the different things that you might have available to you. And sometimes they are untruthful about what you can get and what you can't get. So we've got a real disconnect in the services that that needs to get straightened out. Uh, because I think that we can start finding more homes for them. But also there's a committee that they put together in Orange County that is going to look at the homelessness. I was opposed to the, um, demanding that, I'll talk about home rule, that the counties and cities come up and require a tent city somewhere on county property. Who knows where? I, I voted against that. I don't want to see tent cities. I want to see permanent housing and I want to be able to afford that, uh, for them to be able to afford that. And they're not, you put them out there in a tent city, you take them off the street, but you put them in a tent and you don't know if that family that was sleeping in a car is now in a tent next to a pedophile. It's just unorganized and it should never have happened and it should not happen. But I'm glad to see the county has come step forward and they're gonna try to solve this with, um, having some, talk about civic engagement. They're going to try to have something that they can have for, um, uh, us to move forward with the homeless population. I think it's definitely needed.
Thank you, Senator. Uh, so we're gonna move now to a different topic. Um, we've talked a little bit about vetoes and, um, and legislative process, process in Tallahassee. Um, but here's one that impacts all of Florida, every county in Florida. Uh, recently Governor DeSantis struck millions of dollars designated for the arts from the budget approved by the state legislature. Do you support these type of cuts? Why or why not? If elected, what project would you like to invest in, uh, at the county level? Uh, that includes STEM, culture and the arts and why? Uh, and we'll start with Commissioner Uribe.
Oh, fantastic. Well, I'm really proud that for the first time ever, we made tourist development tax, put more money into the arts. They fought me. I, we got money for U C F and we got $15 million for the arts. It's unheard of. They fought tooth and nail. And guess what? That supports our local community and our local arts. My biggest concern is, and I've told the arts community, when you look at grants, it's always the big companies. And that's great. There's a place for the PhilharMagic, there's a place for the Science Center, there's a place for all these organizations, but I call them corporate art groups. They have a whole team that can apply for grants and can get all this funding. But what about Maria who works for the Colombian consul, who teaches dance, who comes out and dusting? What about the artists who's out there? Artists are not corporate grant people. We have to continue to help and support our arts community. It was with a heavy hand that we did it, but it's the first time in history. We took money from tourist development and put more money, one, for our own university, U C F, and for our arts. And I will keep championing it. And when you think about what we did, $5 million a year, excuse me, 15 million for the next five years, 75 million, that's more than the governor was actually gonna give totally to the state. So we did that here in Orange County. We're leading the way. We have a lot more to, we have a lot more to do, but we actually did something. And we did it with the money that's earned here off the backs of the workers and the people who work in this community. So they can get a part of that too.
Thank you, thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Senator, you'll be next.
Okay, um, well, I asked for 50 million to be placed in the budget. And the, when they went to the appropriations committees on both ends, they ended up with 34 million, of which the governor then vetoed for a pretty flimsy reason, saying that the fringe festival had nudity. It did not, it never had it. Uh, when you go to the fringe festival, it's not any different than Las Vegas. And they are not even eligible to get the money that they were, uh, were gonna get, the 34 million. They weren't even in the, in the, uh, the running for any of that money. So these things like this that happen really frustrate me. Um, but I did get 5 million for the Holocaust museum and that didn't get vetoed. And, uh, so I'm happy, uh, in that regard. But there is no reason for the arts to be attacked the way they were this year. Um, and we've always given money from the state and now it, now we're depending on local taxpayers to try to, uh, make whole what they lost. And it's, it's a very pricey thing to try to get out of our tax, you know, the taxes. So, I mean, I, I'm perfectly fine with them taking that money from, uh, for the T D T, for the arts. I have no problem with that. Um, but again, it's relying on the local people to fill the hole of what we could have had, um, in Tallahassee because of a really dumb idea of what they, a misunderstanding of what they thought the money would be used for.
Mr. Martinez?
I, um, I feel strongly about the arts. It's how the different nationalities express their culture and keep it alive. As many of us know, so many, so many people have lost their identity because, um, they've not been allowed to express and show off their culture. I remember as a child, even in elementary school, where we dressed up, um, and expressed the Puerto Rican, uh, culture dating back to the Borincan days, uh, where we danced plana and bomba and all the different, um, uh, attire that came with being Puerto Rican. And, and, and I remember the same thing for Black History Month. I think it's so important that we continue to invest and, and express our, our traditions through the arts and, and, and anyone who says so is just narrow minded. Um, because it is, what makes us stronger is all of our differences. It's, it's not one track minor, this is the right way, this is the wrong way. It's, it's a matter of, we have come here from so many different places and, and we don't want to be disrespected. We want our cultures to be respected. Our, and, and honestly, I think it's good for the growth of the children and, and, and the fact that they learn to accept this at an early age.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Um, so whoever, whoever, uh, if you get reelected, if you, uh, one of your opponents get, gets selected, we'd love to continue the conversation as Alianza Center. We do, uh, just want to plug one of the events that we have every month. It's our first Fridays. Uh, we, we, uh, we took that tradition from Doug Head, a good friend of ours, who's no longer, uh, here. But he, he, uh, he gave us really the, the opportunity to continue that in his legacy. And a big component of that event every month is the, the arts and the culture and, and sharing, uh, the diversity that we have here in Orlando. So we'd love to talk to whoever gets elected, uh, in the future, uh, about the possibilities of, uh, tapping into some, some of that T D T money. All right. So, uh, on the, and moving on to the economy now, uh, what about, uh, um, your plans? Uh, Orange County has, has a housing crisis. Uh, we talked a little bit about that already. Can you explain the basic crisis and what would you do to bring the county help, uh, to decrease, uh, the, the, the situation with house, the, the crisis in, in housing? And help increase the supply of housing and affordability of that housing? Uh, and we'll start now with Senator Stewart.
Well, I am a proponent of, um, the box housing. And I don't know if that is a good description of it, but over in Lake Nona, they do have a box, uh, area, which is really containers transformed into restaurants and, um, other things. And I think we can have those, uh, done equally as well, uh, for, uh, housing. And that would certainly be, uh, less expensive, uh, uh, price for people to want to move into. Uh, and I think that, I want to explore that further because I think that is something that, you know, would be great. But also we've been doing a little bit of that with the county where when they build something, they put aside a certain percentage for affordable housing within the unit that they're building. Um, and that has been helpful, but it's not enough. They are gonna have to, uh, step up a little higher to how much units that, uh, they would be able to offer for some of the, uh, sizes of the, uh, uh, buildings that they're building or the apartments that they're building. So I think that there's a lot that we can do and I think that it's certainly our challenge to make sure that these things get done, uh, and innovative and find out interesting innovative ways in which that we can provide a cheaper housing market.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Martinez?
Well, I, um, have seen a trend in my neighborhood where four story buildings are going up. Um, in, in, in one particular street, there's like three or four new four story buildings. Unfortunately, with that growth, there was no infrastructure improvements. Um, at the opposite side, you also had a bunch of warehouses go up. Uh, we need responsible building. Um, and after all, you know, developers are not here for charity. Yes, the incentives are good, they're gonna provide the 20%. Uh, but we have to be a little more artistic on, on how we convince them to, to, to include more affordable housing. Um, again, they're in this for the money, they're not in this for charity. I think that, um, as this city continues to grow, that trend will continue to grow. But we'll see single family homes disappear and more four story buildings go up. Um, I like to see responsible building with that coming, uh, uh, as well as, um, not cramming all of those buildings into two lane, uh, streets. I think some, some streets need to be widened in situations like that. Um, I also believe that, um, as far as, um, affordable housing comes with the homeless, we, we give the developer the choice of, of approving the applications because we don't want them to feel that we're dumping the worst of the problems in on them so that they feel that their property value is going to diminish. It's, it's a lot of work that needs to be done, but we have to keep in mind, we are still growing at an alarming rate. Everybody wants to be in the center, which is Orlando, which is our district. We are the heart of Orange County. Uh, it's gonna require a lot of work.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Uribe.
I'm gonna, I want to take a different tone on this because one of the things that really bothers me when they're developing affordable housing is they're sticking in our communities where people don't make enough, where it's minorities and nobody wants it in Winter Park, nobody wants it in Lake Nona. You saw what happened in Horizon West when Disney, Walt Disney World was gonna build 1,400 units and you would have thought the world was ending when that community came out opposed to it. But we did the right thing and we supported it. Because this housing crisis, the tourism industry, they don't pay enough for you to live. When 68% of our Orange County deputies can't afford to live in Orange County, we have a problem. When our firefighters, our teachers, our nurses can't afford to live. But you cannot continue to stick this affordable housing and all these projects in our communities and expect a different outcome. They're not giving 20% units to the developments that's happening. Every once in a while you get a developer who's wanting to do it. It's not a requirement in Orange County. So they are a developed market rate. But you need to work on generational poverty here. We've got to stop kicking this can down the road and saying, oh, we'll worry about it later, we'll worry about it later. You look at Americana, you look at Rio Grande, they just want to stuff it with people. Crime is horrible. And then lastly, hotels that now convert into weekly apartments. The worst thing that ever happened was the one on O B T in Jordan, or is it Voltaire, Jordan? Right there next to the 7-Eleven. It is one of the biggest crime infested, drug infested, gang infested. I have one too at the entrance of my house, Arrow Motel. I am working in Vision 2050 where we stop allowing these motels to be in our residential communities. It is bad for our communities and there's no accountability and nobody does anything. We gotta give dignity to our community, our community. Everyone deserves that in this county. And we've got to stop just saying wherever you want to put it is where it goes. It's gotta end.
Thank you, Commissioner. So we're gonna, we're gonna do a quick round on, uh, a lightning round on T D T. Uh, we talked, because we talked about it already, I think we can go lightning on this one. And that is, uh, do you support, uh, expanding beyond the arts and, and those things that were mentioned earlier? Expanding the use of T D T dollars for, for example, housing and other, other services that, that are needed, uh, for low income folks in the community? Yes or no? And we'll start with, um, Mr. Martinez, yeah.
Um, I absolutely believe.
It is a lightning round.
Yes, transportation. We definitely need to take some of that money from the T D T and go to transportation.
Yes, you have to also include public safety in that too.
I'm for transportation.
Thank you, thank you very much. We would, that one quick, very good. And, uh, and so now, uh, the same with Visit Orlando. Do you believe any changes should be made to Visit Orlando? Uh, and mention, you know, what that change might be, including but not limited to, uh, decreasing their funding. And yes, it's you.
Okay, yes. And that's probably why Visit Orlando doesn't like me right now. We, I asked to cut 2%, 2%. They get 120 million dollars to go on fancy trips, eat at restaurants and call it bringing people to Orange County. What the heck? That is wrong. We actually need some of that money to stay here. Uh, we did get money for the arts from them. We did get money for sports and we did get money for U C F. But you would have thought I was the devil when I did that. And I made sure that money went to our community and stayed here.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Senator?
Some people disregard what actually Visit Orlando does, what their, what their long term thing is. They have helped when there's hurricanes, they volunteered on cleanups of lakes. They've, uh, gone and, uh, done a lot of, uh, things that, you know, we need them to do that they also, we can't underestimate. We've got the Holocaust museum about to break ground. That's gonna take international, um, as well as, uh, US, uh, support. And that means the T D T money or the, uh, Visit Orlando money will have to be spent. I am not for reducing the Visit Orlando money to the point that, uh, they can't do their job and bring tourism here, which is economically beneficial to every single person.
So yes or no? Do you believe in some changes or no changes?
None.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Martinez?
I'm gonna remain neutral on that until I see the return on investment. I know what they do is important where a tourism based economy, um, but I need to see a return on investment. Um, I can't say I'm gonna continue to spend money when I don't see what it's being spent on. I mean, I technically see it, I just need to see it on paper.
So this is, this is one that I'd also like to go a little bit quickly because we touched on it a little bit already and it has to do with homelessness and the homeless crisis in, in, in the county. Let's try to keep him, uh, short and sweet, the, the answer, because we've, again, we've talked about it a little already. Um, what would you trade in the current budget to fix the issue of homelessness? And would you, um, how, how would you deal with it without bankrupting the country? It's a big problem, we all agree, right? It's a big problem. So how do we keep, you know, do something without, you know, going broke? And, um, and is there anything that you would trade in the current budget to, uh, improve the situation with homelessness? And I think it's, Ms. Martin, uh, Mr. Martinez next.
Yeah, that was first last time.
It's okay, I'm good.
So either way, it doesn't matter. So the Senator? Senator, thank you, thank you for keeping me.
That was first last time, okay. Repeat the question.
So it has to do with homelessness, right? So, so what would you do to deal with this issue without bankrupting the county? And, uh, is there, you know, what, what item in the county budget would you trade in order to improve the situation currently with homelessness in the county?
Well, we have, um, a general fund that has, um, uh, bunny in it. Uh, but also, um, leveraging federal money. Um, federal money is available. Um, we need to match it probably and we need to get the state to help out as well. Uh, when you have three entities, uh, coming together to provide that funding. But we have to find funding wherever it is, if it's a little bit here and a little bit there out of the, uh, budget that we can combine into one big pocket of money for the homeless. We need to do something right now about that. They've been ignored far too long and I can't, and it's just gonna get worse.
So is there a specific item that you would cut?
I wouldn't want to say that, you know, we want to take out of the, um, community health budget to give it to homeless. I think that we can look at, uh, various pots of money to bring it all together into one, uh, homeless, uh, fund.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Martinez?
I have been involved with the homeless for a long time. And one of the things that I remember most is that all the money for homelessness coming to Florida goes to Homeless Services Network. Uh, their entry point is 211. I've sent hundreds of homeless people through 211. The people at 211 have no clue what we're talking about. So maybe use some of that money that goes to Homeless Services Network to, to, to help improve the homeless situation. Because again, no nonprofit legally has to spend more than 30% of, of, of their funding on their mission. And I find that very sad. I think that our problem is we're giving all the money to one group instead of spreading the love.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner.
Okay, so one of the things that, my husband lived in a car himself. And for seven years he camped out at, um, for Black Friday to bring awareness and bringing food and collecting food that we would turn around and give to Catholic charities, to the Christian service center and everything. to the Christian service center and everything. We know that this issue didn't start today. It's many, it's a long, long time ago. And the reality is, we're giving too much. We have an audit coming on Visit Orlando. We're going to see how they're spending their millions of dollars. It's an industry that brings in, they thought 345, they just said 355 million now. We're going to get $10 million more. What is going to our local community? We need to also continue to build private partner relationships. What we're doing within Dover and Universal, what we're doing with Disney and working with our frontline essential workers is key in what we keep doing. But you've got to start having some accountability. I'm going to say, we give a lot of money to these agencies and we don't have any accountability. There's a reason why Osceola County has reduced their HSN input. There's a horrible reason why you call 211 and you're homeless and it takes 10 days to get a phone call back. That is not getting services to our community. We need to put in check these agencies that are taking millions in the county and we need to know where they're going. Not just a checkoff of what we're doing, but some real accountability and some real forensic auditing. Because we're not seeing it. There's too much money going out recently. I pulled the HSN contract, $3.7 million. I've asked them, what do you do? Tell me who you help. Tell me if somebody calls you, what you do. They say, we tell them to calm down and take a breather. If you're about to be homeless, the last thing you need to do is a breather. And no one's going to say, hey, in 90 days, I'm going to be homeless. They're calling you when they're in their car, when they need services now. We need to create an emergency fund. When you're saying, I need to fix my car or pay my rent, buy food or pay my rent. Those are the services we need to give because we got to prevent it. We got to prevent eviction and prevent the homelessness because sometimes that's where it starts.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Angel, is there any comments or questions coming from online at this moment? There's a question over here on the economy in the back and then we'll come in. You haven't asked questions. We'll go to the back first.
Yeah, hello. My name is Gabriel. I live in District 3. My question is for anyone who wants to answer it. I really enjoyed this back half of the debate because I think, you know, affordability and the housing crisis is kind of what's most important right now to everyone. So I know we commented, Commissioner Uribe, I appreciate you, you know, wanting to hold Visit Orlando accountable as well and wanting to bring money back to the community. I have a question, whether you support a specific policy. So in California, Washington, Oregon, what they're doing to actually incentivize the right kind of housing is ban single-family home-only zones. And I would like to know if, as a commissioner, you would support banning single-family home only zones so that we can have more missing middle housing, right? More townhomes, more apartments, units that are actually affordable to most Orange County residents. So do you support single-family or banning single-family only zones? And anyone can start.
So we begin with you, Gus.
Okay. First of all, when you ban something specifically, it's across the board. Most of us moved here in the hopes of acquiring the American dream, the family home, the nice neighborhood. With elevated housing comes also more crime. So there's a lot to be differed there, all right? Should we have more multifamily buildings? Sure. Should we ban single families? I don't think so. It's what every person who is working aspires for.
Commissioner?
Okay. First of all, single-family homes aren't popular anymore. Right now, currently, we have over 10,000 apartment units being built and less than 700 single-family homes. And so our district is the most dense district because we're the oldest. We've been here the most. And to tell someone you're going to ban is quite extreme because I don't think open government and public government is like that. Vision 2050 is an encouragement of that infill of that area. But what we have a problem with is developers, when they're coming here and building apartments, they're not looking at affordable housing apartments. They're building market rate. When we see a one-bedroom apartment for $1,800 and up to a three-bedroom from $2,800, no one can afford that. That's more than my mortgage. $1,800 is more than my mortgage for a one-bedroom. So there's a balance. But what we are doing, it's trying to densify some of those areas. But we have to incentivize people to want to build housing that is attainable. I call it attainable because you want to work, but you want to be able to afford where you live. So I think that that's where we lose a lot of that middle. And there's a lot of great people in this community. And quite honestly, you're young. You deserve to write to one day own a home, a single-family home. And that's not going to be a reality moving for your generation, my kids' generations. Because it's not happening. They're not building it. It's not price-worthy. A developer can build an apartment and return gain on investment and four years, get his money back and make profit. A home takes a lot longer. But I don't think, one of the reasons why I'm against Vision 2050 is you can't rule and say this is what we're going to do. I think you have to look at it case by case and you have to see, does it make sense there? But we still need to give dignity to those communities and where they are. So I don't think there's one rule for everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And Senator?
I think that the idea is certainly worth establishing some rules for multiuses in an area as long as they are done in advance of when people move there. I don't think expanding and putting duplexes in someone's backyard in an established neighborhood is going to go over very well. Neighborhoods are going to resent that because when they bought, they bought there to be in that particular neighborhood for, you know, and the traffic involved in it as well to the neighborhoods that have already been established. So for some areas, I think you've got a good idea. But I don't really think that we should be putting on people in established neighborhoods, multi-unit development that is in their boundaries.
Thank you. Well, we're going to go through these remaining questions with one minute instead of two. We are running out of time and it's been a great conversation nonetheless. It's been fantastic. Thank you all for all your input tonight. We're going to touch two issues that are not specific to the county but are being dealt with all over the country and especially here in Florida with one of them. And we'll start with gun violence. Gun violence is something that has become an everyday thing. We're breaking records every year in terms of, you know, people being, especially young people, being victims of gun violence. What is your thought on gun violence prevention? And what can we do in the county to support solving that problem? And I believe the question goes to the last. You started the last time. So it would be Senator Stewart would be the next, I want to answer the question first.
I don't have to keep track of how this is working.
We go, first, it goes around like that. So my earlier was first the last time. You were the first one last time. So we come back around and you're the first one this time.
Okay, I'll try to pay more attention. I am opposed to AR-15s. I am opposed to guns all over the place. I'm not opposed to someone legally having a gun. I'm not opposed to them, you know, being registered with that gun. But there are certain weapons that we absolutely need to ban in society because all they are is killing machines like at Pulse. We do not need those in our communities. And therefore, I have been supported by every town and most of the organizations that are for freeing ourselves of the AR-15.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
I myself carry my concealed carry permit. I am a gun owner. And it's usually not people who do it the legal way who are committing these crimes. There are safety measures that can be taken. They're a little bit expensive, fingerprint readers on guns. And let's face it, it's the fact that people are illegally getting these guns and their, our police departments can't keep up with the weapons that are on our street. Does it require stringent laws? Yes, I think everyone should take a test, should be a sound of mind and should have a license for a gun. To ban people from having guns, it's against our Second Amendment. And unfortunately, you know, you can't go at a burglar with a knife who comes into your house. So I believe in our Second Amendment, right?
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. We're trying to keep to one minute. Commissioner Uribe?
Okay, I'm going to have to say, the crime and the excessive violence that's happening is not happening with people with concealed weapons license, okay? It's happening by people who buy dirty guns on the street. That's the reality. And when you now, it's the good people who have their concealed weapons license, who've taken the appropriate course and are responsible gun owners, you can respect it. I am a responsible gun owner. I have my concealed weapons license. So does my husband. And our kids have learned gun safety and responsibility in our homes. That's where it starts. And it's our right to protect ourselves. That's first and foremost. And do we need to not just do a blanket, whoever can buy? Absolutely not. Because you know what? We have a mental health crisis going on in this country. And when you look traditionally, when you're seeing mass shootings, there is a mental health suicidal component to that. And this is a lot deeper than a yes or no or not because I think that the people who are appropriately doing it are doing it the right way and they deserve to protect themselves and that right to protect themselves and their families.
Thank you, Commissioner. So the next issue is a hot issue also as a result of the Supreme Court striking down Roe versus Wade. The states now get to decide, you know, what is the regulation on a woman's right to choose and abortion? So in the state of Florida, and this is very interesting. We just finished, concluded a series of focus groups with 30 people in our community. And it was shocking to see that in our community, people don't know that currently in Florida, there's a six-week ban that starts with the last period of the woman. So literally in a month.
If we know that.
If in six months, by any chance, you realize that you're pregnant, you literally have only, you know, at best, two weeks to figure out what to do. So with this sixth ban, for one of these, what's going on that people don't know? And we have an opportunity now with Amendment Four. So what are your positions on this issue? And what is your stance on Amendment Four quickly? Mr. Martinez, you start.
Okay. Well, abortion has been a hot topic to divide the country for many years. When Roe v. Wade was put back into place, my aunt was the first one on I-Went-This-News in New York being rolled in for her abortion. I think it's a family issue. I don't think it's a political issue. It's a family issue on the family who's impacted. For them to decide what to do, it is not my place to say.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
I'm 50 years old with a seven-year-old. So that means at the age of 43, I found out I was having my great son Lincoln. And my husband and I got to sit with our doctor and make a decision. My doctor recommended that I not have my son because I was too old and my health could be complicated. And one of us couldn't live. When I went to deliver my son, the doctor said to my husband, who do I save, her or him? He said her, right? But you know what? At the end of the day, we had a choice. We had a choice with our doctor. We had a choice as husband and wife. And we had a choice to make that on my body. And I'll just say it right here, the government has no role in our bedroom. Point blank.
Thank you. Senator Stewart?
I'm not sure if that was a yes or no, but I am totally in favor of the amendment that is put on the ballot. It is a matter of a woman's health. It's a matter, as mentioned, that it is between the woman and her doctor and her family as to whether or not she chooses to go that route. The ballot initiative that we have goes back to 24 weeks. It was, you know, a couple of years ago, they changed it to 16. Next year, I have people in the Senate that want to have no weeks. So we've got to stop it. We've got to vote to support that Amendment Four and to support the 24 weeks. And you put it back, we're just putting it back to what it used to be.
Thank you, Senator Stewart. Okay, so we're going to end in the topic of Hispanic access, which is a real issue. I think that almost any nonprofit organization and any individual in the community might notice that there's a lot of resources being generated through taxes and other ways here in the county. And it always seems like the Hispanic community is in the last place. And that is so difficult to navigate and that there are folks who have been able to figure out and how to navigate those channels in order to get the access. But for the Hispanic community, that's still a growing issue. So as you know, District 3 has the highest percentage of Hispanic residents in the county. Of these, Puerto Ricans are the largest subgroup. How would you work as a commissioner? Or how do you work as a commissioner to address the needs and challenges of Hispanics and the things that they face on a daily basis? And I think it's Commissioner Uribe.
Okay. First of all, we're all Latinos, okay? We're all Hispanics and we need to continue to remember that because they try to divide us. Secondly, we have to keep fighting. Last night, I met the new director for Latinos in Tech. I have been looking for someone to do tech because there's funding, but there's nothing going on to the Latino community. Secondly, when it comes to services that are offered from the county, contracts. I just had a chat with the Colombian chamber where I had a room of 50 business owners. He didn't even know how to do business with Orange County. I made a contract amendment on the convention center that, one, they have to include a higher percentage of minorities. And I pushed with the chamber to get more Hispanics in that. Secondly, they have to get paid within 20 days of completing the job because we know that's a big problem. We can't wait six months to get paid. But thirdly, we have to be purposeful in doing that. I also challenge OCPS, the library, the city of Orlando. And we have to make minority certification the same for everyone. They try to make us run through hoops at every different agency and it's got to stop. And we got to keep championing that and make it more feasible for us to be involved.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator?
Well, I think what we're looking at here is a one-stop place that we can go to where the people that are at that location know all the services that are available so that they could send people in the right directions rather than having that individual trying to make 10,000 phone calls to find out how, you know, what service that they can have access to. So I think that we've got just an unorganized situation here that can easily be solved by putting a one-stop. And if it costs money to do it, it's going to still be less of a cost to the taxpayers than having to go through individual agencies.
Mr. Martinez?
Well, I believe that having bilingual individuals in key positions are important to communicate what's going on in our community. Our community has to be, our government has to be reflective of our community. And so whether it's the age that a bilingual, whatever the measure needs to be, anything that is going to be put forth in the county vote should be advertised well in advance and in the Spanish newspapers. I just think that communication is the most important thing. And if that person, and trust me, our way of being Hispanic is, no te preocupes, mijo, tal bien. No, we need to be more aggressive because the world does not belong to the shy.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martinez. So the next question is regarding something that we have touched on a little bit earlier. Alianza was founded about eight years ago, or we started about eight years ago. We really became an official organization in six years ago. But one of our first priorities was helping to increase the representation of Hispanics and Puerto Ricans specifically in the county. Why? Because we're the largest group and we're the fastest-growing group. And when I say we, it's not just the Puerto Ricans, it's all of the Hispanics, right? And at that point, the commission was five out of six white and there was only one black representative. But there was no Hispanics in the county at that point. We never dreamed that as a result, like you mentioned, there would be 50% Latina represented in the county, which proportionally is actually an over-representation now. But what can we continue to do to encourage Hispanics to reach positions of power? However, even though we have the 50% Latinas in the county, in those boards where decisions are made, where recommendations are made to the county board, there isn't that level. So we've been able to elect faces and actors that act and do in the community. But in the trenches where the sausage is made, if you would, we don't have that representation. And I think that may be part of the problem that we're facing in terms of, you know, grants and contracts going to Hispanic, to the Hispanic community. So I lost track again. I think it's.
I was first last time.
Okay, so.
Linda.
Yeah, Linda Stewart. Senator.
Thank you. Um, Linda's fine. Um, so, you're right. You're absolutely right in your description of, um, the lack that is out there. And the membership, uh, committee that, uh, each of us, as a county commissioner, are allowed to appoint someone to. So you've got, uh, to have that commissioner appoint people that will be reflective, not just of the Latino community, uh, for the membership, but they need to be able to have contacts out in the community, so they can put the people on other boards. So if, if you put, uh, someone, uh, that is Latin on the, uh, membership board, they would have more reach to be able to, um, get the other boards more in line with the population. Um, having a commissioner, uh, that understands that, whether they're, uh, Hispanic or non-Hispanic, but it's the commitment to making sure that this, um, is widely, uh, put out there. And so I have always struggled in, but we've been able to manage, when I was in the Board of County Commission, to be very clear about, uh, the representation on these boards. And, um, you know, some of the representation, uh, that have been placed on these boards are inadequate, and they're after their own benefit and their own, they want their friends on it. They're not looking at diversity. They're looking, "What friend can I get on this board that can help me do this?" And that's, we gotta stop that.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. Martinez?
I believe that as Puerto Ricans, we, we got our, our citizenship back in nineteen seventeen, and we are the only Spanish-speaking, um, um, people who, who are born with that right. And so as such, it is our responsibility to, to, to bring up the rest of the Hispanic community, whether it's Colombian, Argentinian, um, Venezuelan, Cuban, Mexican. We are a strong people. We work hard, we, we, we don't want anything for free. And, and so, um, we're not only representative of our culture, but we're representative as, as, as Americans. And, and as Americans, um, if you can look at pictures going back to any war, you have Hispanics among them, you have blacks, all, all green or all blue, depending on their branch. I believe that, that we can come together as one people, and, and, and we're gonna overcome that. We are strong as a weakest link. We're gonna, we're gonna get past that.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Commissioner Uribe.
Okay, I'm a Latina woman, and I want to be purposeful. And just because we're Latino, doesn't mean we're not qualified. I'm proud at two of the most powerful boards in Orange County, the BZA and the PNC. I have two Latino representing us. Juan Vélez from Sky Builders For All, you're very aware of them and all the work that they do in our community. He represents us in the PNC, a qualified general contractor who has the experience and knowledge. Over on the BZA, also, Jose Fernandez, a land use attorney who knows the law. When it comes to the art, Roberto Gonzalez, a well-estude artist who has been at the Dr. Philip Center. Just because we're Latino, we're qualified for the job, and we've gotta stop saying that we're not, and that we're doing favors. It's about time we get recognized for the talent we bring to the table, and we gotta support it. But what happens is, you don't see it. Because as much Latinos as we are in this community, and yes, we have fifty percent board, we know that the powers that be, look at the city of Orlando, you got one Latino. The cities, the power that be is still, does not look like the mix of the community this is. We are the most, but we have the least amount of power, and we have to recognize it and keep championing it. Because I know plenty of Latinos in this room who are qualified for a lot, including Mr. Martinez, who served on boards in the county. So we gotta keep championing for that.
So, thank you. Uh, thank you, Commissioner. And so we're gonna end our official questions, and we're gonna take some more from the, a couple, a couple more, because it's getting late from the audience. But our last official question from the script, uh, is hypothetical, and I'd like each of you to say what would you do with this situation, right? So, um, a local Latino organization, uh, puts in a grant for, uh, to, to provide services for the, uh, for the elderly. Uh, and they score ninety-one on their review. And a national, large national, uh, uh, nonprofit, uh, puts in for the same contract or the same grant, and they get a three percent larger, uh, score on their, on their, um, on, on their score. Um, in that review board, there's only one Hispanic and twelve non-Hispanics in that board. Um, the national, big national organization got ninety-four, the, the same, and the, uh, local organization got ninety-one. Uh, what would you recommend, uh, for the nonprofit to do, one? And what would you do as a commissioner, uh, with that situation? Um, whose turn is it?
Probably mine.
It's the last question. I, I made it through.
First of all, I would tell you what I would do. Um, I'm about keeping the money here. I'm about to serving those here. I'm about to support, uh, supporting those businesses or nonprofits that are here. So I would definitely vote in favor of the local nonprofit, um, whether it, whether it's that scenario, or, or cameras going to, to, um, Arizona, wherever it is. We got a good traffic camera company right here that they can get the contract. We have local businesses that can do the work here locally, and that's where I would put my finger plate on.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Commissioner Uribe.
We gotta start putting them in the same bucket. The reality is, like I said when it came to the art, you've got big corporate nonprofits who, that's all they do, is go and seek all those funds and take it. We've got, we've now started doing the art for local people, where they have set aside money, where the big guys can't come and take it all. And we've gotta do the same thing with our nonprofits, and we're starting to do that, especially when it comes to infill, building houses. We're now having these, you know, lots that we're giving to local builders who can build affordable housing. We've gotta stop having you compete with the big guys, because it's not fair. And they're corporate, you're local, you're boots on the ground, and we've gotta continue to acknowledge that, and we gotta continue to champion. It's a lot easier, that's why we're HSN. I just write a big check, because I know they got that reputation. But yet there's other organizations that are doing the work in, in the community, but they're not getting anything. Where you give a local community ten thousand dollars, that makes a big difference. You give a big community ten thousand dollars, that's administration fees. It's not being used where it needs to be, and we've gotta stop putting them in the same bucket. We've gotta separate it, and we've gotta champion and continue to champion that, from the arts all the way to services.
Thank you, Commissioner. Senator?
Well, the first thing that we could do, and should be doing, and, is that, uh, those that are local would get more points automatically when they sat down at the table, uh, they wouldn't, uh, they'd automatically get, uh, a certain amount of points that...
Handicap.
A handicap, if you wanna call it that. Good, good word. Um, but that would help solve some of that, uh, discrepancy with, uh, the big guys versus the local people. Um, and so I think that, when I was in the county commission, we did give, um, a few extra points, but I think maybe we need to up that.
All right, thank you, Senator. And that concludes our official questions. We're gonna go to the, to the audience, um, over here.
It's me again.
Okay.
It's always gonna be me, no, I'm... So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back.
Definitely have a great voice.
Thank you. I'm gonna go back, because everybody knows what my passion is and my fight, right? All the way from Port Ritchie, all the way to Orlando, which Orlando has been very challenging to me, by the way. Um, I just came running down from Port Ritchie today. Um, later on, we were talking about the homeless, right? And we were talking about, what if we took it from somewhere else? What entity or what organization would we take it out from? So I'm over here trying to listen, but in my head, I'm saying, "We have these contracts with two local organizations." One of them is what, Samaritan? Refresh my memory, Samaritan, right? The other one is the Coalition for the Homeless, right? Okay, so these are, these are contracts, many monies given to these organizations to try to keep these people off the streets. Now, my question is, who monitors that? Who monitors how many of them are kept off the street? How many of them are actually helped? How many of them are actually taken to the next step? Because I know one of them doesn't house them, right? El Coalition tiene apartamento, no?
No, the Coalition does house them.
Okay, but they can only do so much. So why are we giving these taxpayers money to these organizations? That if we, I've looked at their track record, and I've been there myself to see the services. For example, Samaritan, I can go in there today, take a bath, but I can't take a bath for the next two days, but yet I get to sleep in front of their, like, in the parking lot, right? Does that fix my problem? They, I get stale food. I mean, and, and, and I don't mean to sound mean, but, I mean, I've been doing this for a long time, and I see that they get all this money, taxpayers' money, right? So what if we took from them? What if we hold them accountable? What if they, we went ahead and said, "Look, you've been with us for a certain amount of time. We need you to show us proof that somebody got a job, somebody did this, somebody did that." Because I think it's taxpayers' money that's gonna waste. Is there a way that we can go ahead and do something about that?
So, yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead, and then, uh, Commissioner and the Senator.
I have been a thorn in the side of the homeless coalition since way before they had the new building that Goya and Marc Anthony donated six million dollars for. I have been in there, and I wrote articles in newspapers and took pictures of the men's shower room where the models waste hide. They got a new building, and they take the same old beds with the bedbugs to the new building. That's stupidity. And we keep doing the wrong things over and over again. When it comes to the human popul, uh, the homeless population, we need to remember that they are humans. Um, um, the other place that you mentioned is just a drop-in center. They let them wash their clothes, take a shower, can't but come back for a few days. We have three homeless shelters in Orlando. Every one of them has limited beds, and you can never find a place to stay. And every one of them charges, all right? So what are they gonna do for that nine dollars or whatever they get charged? They, they're gonna break into your car and take whatever's in your backseat. So not only that, but it contributes to crime, all right? So we need to break what's broken and build it brand-new.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Commissioner?
I actually think a little bit deeper. I think the problem is HSN. They're just a corporate office. They don't do anything but give the agencies money. They don't do anything. Three point seven million dollars that I protested. I can't, I can't even find out what they do with their money. I'm like, "What do you do?" That's what I ask them, "What do you do?" "Well, we oversee who's checking in, and we're getting a list." They're not doing anything. There's a lot of waste, and there's a lot of inaccountability. And when you, there's, there are agencies that are a little bit more accountable, like the Salvation Army, where they make you check in, get a job, start wrapping, wrapping the services. They make you. But then you get a lot of these other agencies that that's how they make money. And I think it starts from the top. There's a reason why Osceola County cut the funding on HSN. They just barely kept enough to qualify for the federal funds. We need to look in it a lot deeper. We need to look, they just hired someone that's now oversees that for the county, because for a long time, it sat empty. Nobody was even looking at it from the county. And we need to keep pushing, because there's a lot of money that disappears, and there's no accountability, and there's no change.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I agree. Um, and as you recall...
It's, um, it's, it's Senator's turn.
I agree with, um, Honorable Martinez. Um, he has been in the field, and we've spoken about, um, the situation. And I have spoken also with, uh, the group that is here representing, um, homeless, uh, individuals who, they fight real hard for one another. And what, what I'm being told, and what I think is totally disgusting, is that promises are made that they're gonna pay for somebody to be in a hotel, and then they don't have a contract, they break the contract, and then they throw them out on the street, and they tell them that, "Oh, well, you're not homeless anymore, because we got you a place, and you're in a place, so we're not gonna pay for you anymore." I mean, that's just, you know, horrible, uh, ways of treating the homeless. And somebody's making huge profits off of it, because they're charging, uh, one thousand fifty dollars a month for someone to go in a hotel, but then when you go look in the network, um, from the county, that same hotel room is nine hundred dollars. Somebody's making a profit. There's something going on out there that should not be going on. And that, or, those little items can certainly be investigated, because, uh, they're not doing their job. There might even be corruption involved, and I think that, that we can't allow. And we can't use our taxpayer money, or the federal's, or the state, or anybody's for that without them resolving that problem.
Thank you, Senator. And with that, uh, uh, we're gonna go to closing statements, because we're running out of time. So like we said, you started the opening statements. Uh, Commissioner Uribe, you will begin the closing statements.
Fantastic. Um, again, I want to thank everyone who's watching, because we know there's people watching, and everybody who came tonight and stayed a long time, and, and my family for being here, who's always with me. And it's, we always say, "You buy one, you get two and a half free." Um, it is about that, family. It is about everyone in this community being a part of this. We've made changes in six years. We have a long way to go, we know it, but we've started to pivot that boat that we've been longing for. And I'm worried, because it's race, they're challenging people to take us away, to take, to take our vote and to take our ability. We've made strides in our community, we continue to make strides. We gotta serve, we gotta continue to offer services, we gotta continue to communicate, and we have to build what we're doing. And I'm gonna advocate, we have to protect our seniors, but we have to encourage our young people. We need them involved. It worries me what our future looks like, because we're not interested. And I love what you're doing, I love what we're doing, because that's how we do it. I hired ten high school students, and hopefully, them are gonna plant a seed of where we're going. And I gotta say, we gotta empower more women. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez?
I was raised, um, a certain way. I was taught to roll up my sleeves and get to work if I didn't like something. And, and I believe it's time for us to roll up our sleeves and get down and start fixing this problem, um, all across our community. And, and it starts right here. Charity begins at home. Um, kindness doesn't cost anybody anything. I, I believe that I will be the best choice, because I've been out in the community, I know our needs. I, I've been a blue-collar worker all of my life, and, and, and unfortunately, salaries are not getting any better in Orange County. I believe, um, there was a vote to keep Orange County a low-wage-paid county. Um, I will definitely be looking at raising first responder salaries. There's so much that needs to be done across the board, and, and I think I'm the person to do it. Remember to vote Gus Martinez.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Senator Linda Stewart?
Well, again, um, you know, this, uh, job is a very challenging job, and you have to, uh, start off with sincere honesty, um, and also the ability to work with everybody, um, not just, uh, a one group. We have to come together and work and compromise, and, and try to come up with the best answer for the, for each and every situation. That is what I'm best at. I, uh, I respect everybody's opinion, and I know we can work together as a community, um, to include everybody, and, and we just have to continue to do that. Uh, I can only say that I too have lived here my whole life. I have, uh, went to Boone, my kids went to Boone, my grandkids went to Boone. So I've been in this community a very long time, and, uh, I just love everybody here, and I've got to know so many of you. Uh, you know who I am. Uh, when I speak to you, you see me in public, you see me on the streets. I am here to work for you. I'm here to be your voice at the county commission. I will not give you false hope. I will not tell you one thing and do something else. I will only do what it is that needs to be done on your behalf. And so I hope you'll, uh, look at all my past record, how I've served you, and vote Linda Stewart.
Thank you. And thank all three of you for being here tonight. Uh, it's been a great conversation. Before we end, I want to recognize the staff that have made this, uh, discussion possible. Our communications director, Angel Sepulveda. Our deputy director, José Rodríguez. With the technology and the cameras and, and a whole production, Henry and John over there. Um, the one that puts all the logistics together, Carla, and gets all of these wonderful guests to come and, and, and provide their, their, uh, advice and thoughts here. And of course, our great board, founding board member, Nancy Rosado.
Yeah, Nancy!
Yeah, I mentioned Osmer, right?
No.
I didn't? Okay, well, don't forget about Osmer. And with that, thank you all for being here. Un aplauso para esta, para los, los candidatos. Y un aplauso para ustedes, más grande todavía.